Good evening, Mr. Solicitor. Glad to see you safely. If I'm wrong. Okay, so first to change.
So, yes, I don't know if we have a hearing, consideration and possible action regarding the foreign licenses for Big France Inc. Doing business as Splash Bar, Splash Snack Bar at 548 Lanzo Avenue. And we have one second. And then state your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Joseph Lanagena. My address is 2417 Menden Road in Windsor Park. And on behalf of the police department.
Good evening, just for the record, could the license hold? Also state your name, please. Good evening. Okay, so just to open up, so you're aware of why you've been called before us this evening, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'm not with that.
Okay.
Sir, yes, excuse me.
Thank you for coming up to the podium. We're going to actually have the Colonel give his report this evening. Then that'll give you some background on why you called here. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, see, we may be able to start.
Good evening, Colonel.
Good evening. Okay, so just to open up, so you're aware of why you've been called before us this evening, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'm not with that.
Okay.
Sir, yes, excuse me.
Thank you for coming up to the podium. We're going to actually have the Colonel give his report this evening. Then that'll give you some background on why you called here. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, see, we may be able to start.
Good evening, Colonel.
Good evening, Colonel James Mandosik, please keep some thought. Just got a brief right here from the Naver. Received information from the Morning Ship Commander Lieutenant Steven Bradley. We got a Splash Bar located at 548 Lanzo Avenue becoming a nuisance establishment. Lieutenant Bradley ordered Major Bazakowski a three-month period from August 2014 through October 2014 in which members of the department had to respond to the Splash Bar 20 times for police service. After all units responded for larger service on October 10th, 2014, the slummers did schedule police details for a six-weeks period from October 17th until November 21st. Once per week alternated between Friday and Saturday nights. During the last scheduled detail between November, November 21st, 2014, a fight broke out inside the establishment where the detailed officer was on scene. At the conclusion of the detailed period, our department continued to have high response and calls for service at this location. The Morning Ship Supervise and now requires officers to respond each night at closing time to ensure all patrons leave the establishment as the agency now has no confidence in the owner's ability to close without incidents or violations. A one-year study was conducted by Major Bazakowski at my request from February 6th, 2014 through February 6th, 2015 to look at a full scope of service, calls for service to the Splash Bar. It's also monitored additional calls for service at the Splash Bar which have continued to occur on a regular basis. The most recent incident occurred on February 8th, 2015 in which patrons were still inside the establishment, sitting at the bar consuming full alcoholic beverages after closing and all the exterior doors were locked. We stopped responding officers from entering the business. The following is a summary of the findings. The Central Falls police department responses Splash Bar 163 times in a one-year period. 105 of the responses were area checks to confirm all patrons had left the establishment at closing time. 13 calls for disservices, fights, assaults and disorderly conduct. 12 calls for remove unwanted persons from the businesses that would not leave upon the statute request. And you see, the next page is the list of all the calls by date. Let me go back to the second bullet, 105 responses for area checks. Some may say, well, that's us proactively checking the bars. We check all the bars to make sure they're closed. But there's more, there are many more bars, or establishments now that are also on the street. And there's certain ones that we have to pay more attention to. This is one such establishment that we, every single Friday, Saturday night, we have to be there. It's imperative that we're there to make sure everything goes smoothly and people leave. There is, there's no way if it's not responding. As we're busy on office service, it takes our time waiting there. It's part of the practice that we have to be there every Friday, Saturday night to close that place. Because there's no way, without us being there, there's not going to be problems there. Just wanted to reiterate that. I also have, you don't have copies of the actual reports because it took us too much time to redact some of the names from them. But if there's any of the lists on that page that you want me to refer to, I can go over in detail any of those incidents.
Colonel, can you speak to the most recent disturbance on the 11th of February this year?
On February 11th, 2015, at 23:45 hours, 11:45, units were dispatched at 548 Lanzo Avenue Splash Bar. We got and reported two male fighting with one wielding a knife. The driver was making delivery in the area and observed the two males. Upon arrival, four officers detained approximately seven males that were outside. We checked of the three males that matched the description of the two males observed by the driver with the team for further investigation. At which time, it was later determined that two of the males were play fighting allegedly. No weapons were located. However, one of the males had, was wanted by North Promise, they wanted, wanted by North Promise and was subsequently arrested. This is roughly the fourth call this month for disturbance at Splash, two of which of males wielding knives in the parking lot. That was the most recent and prior to that.
Looks like it was one on the 6th.
And the 6th. On Friday, February 6th, 2015, at approximately 12:45 a.m., police units responded to 548 Lanzo Avenue Splash Bar for the report with a physical altercation between several individuals. Upon arrival, officers observed several vehicles attempting to leave the parking lot along with several individuals arguing just outside the great entrance of the bar. At that time, a bar employee advised police officers, please, there was a male with a knife who attempted to stab some of the patrons that were originally inside the bar. Officer Cameron was able to locate the male, who at the time was holding a retractable knife in his hand. Officer Cameron ordered the male, later identified as Adriano Barbosa, to drop the knife and show him his hands. Adriano complied and was later placed into custody for assault with a dangerous weapon. Witnesses stated there was a verbal altercation inside the bar between Adriano and several unidentified males, which later turned physical in the parking lot. Several individuals began fighting and subsequently a female was stabbed in the hand. Officers were able to disperse a crowd of about 25 highly intoxicated individuals without any more physical altercations. It should be noted that during this incident, there were several people who were able to leave the bar without both beverages and continue to drink in the parking lot and the police units were able to clear the crowd and close the bar. Those are just February.
Thank you. Do you want to go ahead and open up for discussion? To take down a question?
Sure, now, I really would like Maria's representative to take the stand and see if she has any rebuttal in regards to the reports that we have in front of us. I assume, sir, you have the reports?
Thank you, Colonel.
Thank you, Chief, thank you.
Well, I do not have the benefit of the truth of the February 11th and February 6th. Are you seeing in the package, was it in this package?
You said it's back. Didn't make copies of the actual reports because there's some witness information there that had been redacted, but I can furnish it with any copies you can.
I think it's best that we could schedule a hearing on this.
This is a hearing.
I think I read in the notice that if a hearing was requested, it would be scheduled. I mean, I'm not prepared to have a hearings. I get handed this five minutes ago and I get read reports that I haven't seen. You know, we need a chance to make a case.
This is a show cause hearing, so if you show cause and plead not guilty and present a case as to why the board should continue this matter, then the board has the ability to do that. But certainly, the actions that happen and are ongoing are of concern to the city. So you need to present cause as to why the board should allow them to stay open or not face any discipline between now and a hearing date that you request.
Well, one issue that I have is that one of the reports said there were a number of highly intoxicated individuals. That's a conclusion. I don't know how you say that that's a fact. I mean, were they tested? Well, you know, I mean, there are a lot of issues of fact here. In fact, that the.
Are you disputing a stabbing occurred inside the establishment?
I don't know. I'm handed this for the first time. I don't, yeah, I guess I'm disputing it because I don't know. I need an opportunity to consult with my client if you do these reports with her and make a case.
How much time does it need, sir?
I can tell you that I am available on March 9th, I am available. Oh, hold on one second, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm not available for 16th, I'm not available for 30th.
That's too far, sir, that's too far down the road. We're concerned here tonight.
Yeah, we're talking.
What we're talking about now, the establishment cannot continue to stay open with the recent reports like this. I mean, you had a problem, what, February 8th, for example, February 6th.
Yeah, there's three incidents.
Our concern is here tonight. I mean, I think we're prepared to take action tonight. You know, if you want your hearing down the road, but this isn't fair to the residents of Central Falls. It's not fair to the police department. Rescue, I'm sure, has been over there. Me personally, I think it's time to take action. But to say, to wait till March 9th, I mean, we could have another stabbing between now and then or many incidents, in my opinion, but no.
I understand, but with all due respect, you know, I think that there has to be a hearing. There has to be an opportunity for me to, I mean, I just can't come in here and get a package this day and reports that are not included in the package that are referred to in the Colonel's testimony and be able to make our case.
Well, I think the onus was on the owner to have you represent her a lot sooner than tonight.
This is the first time she's seen this too. I mean, again, I don't.
I would be hard pressed to believe that someone would own a bar and have stabbing in the bar and not expect to have some sort of hearing after that occurrence. So I'm sure you discussed that with your client before tonight and did not get properly prepared to talk about it before tonight.
Well, why would, so my question would be, why did you think you were coming here? You didn't, she didn't tell you about an incident that happened less than two weeks ago?
We read a report that says if you request a hearing, a hearing would be scheduled.
Again, but she knew about the incidences that happened in the same month, did she?
It says if you show cause and plead not guilty, a hearing date may be scheduled. That's what it says. It's why there's a show cause hearing, you have to show cause.
Okay, I'm showing cause, I can test some of the reports.
Yeah, of course.
So could this board request or take action on what happens from now until March 9th? Can we request that the business pay for police detail children or?
Can we convene?
The board, the board can take actions zero to 100 on the licensee, license itself between now and the hearing date based on facts that are in the record. If he's showing cause to your satisfaction and has pled not guilty, which we haven't heard yet, then a hearing date can be scheduled where witnesses can be called and reports can be registered in the record. Is there a, is there a, if there is a certain discipline that you would seek, you may want to propose that and then have counsel talk to his client over a brief recess.
So we could do that, at least in the interim, until we can, you can actually, we can actually schedule another date, which, or at least, our next council meeting is?
March 9th.
March 9th. Okay, so, go ahead, Counselor, I'm sorry.
Okay, again, my concern is with the track record, 163 calls in one year, is what's going to happen between now and the next time you have your hearing? I ask my fellow board members to consider steering action between now and then. In addition to a detail, number one, I think your closing hours should be shortened. Apparently, they're open well after closing time.
Well, it seems to be, yeah, I would also add that there seems to be a problem with getting the patrons out in a timely fashion. And if the police are having to come to make sure people are left, that would be.
That would be one, detail would be another, and I still think, these are facts in front of us. I think there should be abbreviated, the bar should be closed. That's just my feeling. This can't go on. I mean, what happens again between now and the next time we meet with you? It's not a good track record. If there was at least a track record where you went two or three months without a problem, that's one thing. It's not in there. There's nothing consistent with the, this is not a okay corral. This is a city, and we can't have this. And to wait on you to March 9th is, I guess that's the best date. I don't think it's fair, again, to the residents, and I don't think it's fair to our police department, and I don't think it's fair to our rescue. That's just my feeling, that's all.
Anybody else? Counselor, you have something? Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion at this time to take Colonel Mandosik's report and enter it into the record for the board's consideration. Second, okay, second by Counselor, I'm sorry. Okay, and Counselor, figure out, it was just quieter.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All of those, any votes, yeah, okay. Motion carries, thank you. All right, at this stage, I think we're comfortable with imposing some sort of detail requirement. Is that a Friday, Saturday, Sunday? Similar to what we did for our last hearing? And as far as hours go, when do they close, when do you close?
When I close. When I close.
So we push it back perhaps until midnight?
12 o'clock.
Midnight, at least for the period between now and the next few weeks. Everybody agree with that? So I'd like to entertain a motion to impose required police detail for Friday, Saturday and Sunday at Splash Snack Bar, as well as shorten hours, abbreviated hours, closing at midnight on Friday, Saturday and Sunday during the week.
Midnight, every night?
You want to do midnight every night?
Sure.
Monday through Friday, I mean, Monday through Thursday, is it midnight as well?
Monday, I.
She's open at 1:00 every night.
Can I say a few words?
Of course, come on, sure.
My headline is Friday and Saturday. Sunday is on tomorrow. Monday, I close at 10:00.
Yeah, that's what I.
If I don't have anybody, if I don't have nobody, I close at 10:00. If I have a few people, 11:00. Tuesday is the same way. I start having a little people like Thursday, quarter, quinta.
Thursday and Friday?
Wednesday and Thursday.
Yeah, I close at 12:00. And Friday and Saturday, 1:00. Incident is sometimes people they have like 1:00 or 1:20. Me, 12:45, 1:00, everybody's out. But the thing is, this last incident, it was 12:45, everybody's leaving. And this kid from Brooklyn, I don't know where he comes from, stopped rooms all sudden and that's what everybody leaving. Some things, no matter how you try, you can help incidents like that.
Okay, but here, but while we're waiting to have the actual hearing, let's agree that you'll close on the weekends at midnight, make sure that everybody's out at midnight and of course, the police will be by to make sure that you're adhering to that. Okay, we appreciate that, and that'll give us a chance. You can come prepared with your testimony and your evidence.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, certainly, yes.
I have a question. Now, you say Monday and Tuesday you close at what, 10:00, sometime 11:00 Tuesday. Now, what happens if you do have patrons in at 11:00? Will you stay open later?
Well, I still.
Normally you say, so theoretically, you could, the way it's set up now, you could still close at 1:00 p.m. I mean, yeah, because 1:00 a.m., that's what your license says.
Monday and Tuesday.
Even though it's quiet, the fact is, your license allows you at this point. So if you had a full bar at 11:00 on Tuesday, theoretically, you could close at 1:00. We're trying to avoid this altogether, in my opinion, every night, it should stay.
Okay, so we'll do it midnight, most likely it's not going to happen, but that way, that way if it does, right, that way if it does.
You shove a key door on that happening.
Okay, so, thank you very much. So I'd like to entertain a motion that we are going to require Splash Snack Bar to have a police detail Monday, oh, sorry, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and they will close and have abbreviated hours.
Sunday, Sunday's out, Sunday on this, so Friday and Saturday is my time days. I appreciate.
Colonel, would you like to speak to any of that with Sunday incidences? I just want to make sure whether you believe that we need a detail every day during the weekend or just Friday and Saturday?
Well, I do believe it is imperative to have on every single Friday and Saturday night. I think we can forego Sunday alone and have live entertainment. There's no live entertainment, there's no reason to have a detail on Sunday. So it's up to you, if you're not going to have any live entertainment, there's no need for detail. What you do, if we go there and find out that you have live entertainment on that day, that information will be brought to the board and that's not going to obviously look favorable toward you.
Okay, okay, thank you for entertaining. Okay, so, that being said, Friday and Saturday, every week, every weekend, until we return back on March 9th. Okay, so a detailed officer Friday and Saturday, abbreviated hours, closing no later than midnight. That means everyone has left the building. I'm sorry, Colonel.
Just have a question.
Sure, certainly.
I suppose that midnight, the detail would be from 8:00 to midnight, correct?
Correct, yes.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
You looking for?
Yeah, motion, please. Second, thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyways, thank you, motion carries. So we'll be reconvening at. Okay, so I need to know if you agree with.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Yeah, I want to understand, but all days of the week, Saturday and Sunday is at 12:00.
Correct, that's correct.
Seven days, yeah.
That's correct. I mean, most likely it won't be wrong what you say, because you don't have that type of business until midnight, but just to make sure that in the event, and of course, no entertainment.
On Sunday.
Yes, no entertainment on Sundays.
And do we set a date for the hearing?
Yep, March 9th, which is our next council meeting.
I would rather have it, well, I guess the same, I guess, because this could be wrong.
We could do it second, we could do it second, get the.
Okay, so I would schedule a hearing for like 8:00, just to be safe, 7:00?
You want to start early?
Yeah, if we can start early, like.
Stop the council at 5:00?
Five.
I, 5:00, very difficult, 5:30 is fine.
Okay, so 5:30.
5:30, that was difficult today, so. I go 5:30 council and.
We could do council at 7:00.
And liquor to follow rather than put a time just in case because we got that 15-minute lead wait.
So you want to do liquor second?
If we put it at 7:30 liquor or we go over to council, I don't know. Oh, you definitely liquor second.
Liquor second, yeah. So we'll start at, do we agree that we're going to start at 8:00? I don't, I have no idea what the agenda for council.
Is your, it's your regularly scheduled meeting? Everybody have some agendas that have been postponed from the February 9th meeting? So on average, we've run two hours.
Could we just be forced to deal with my diligence of meeting and do 7:30?
More nicer too. Okay, so just a suggestion, we could always do, say, Solicitor thinks that it won't take. So it's going to take two hours for us if we start at 5:30 with liquor and then for sure, because it's two hours, we have, it'll be, this agenda and we have two other, just the two.
So you want to do the liquor and 5:30, the council and follow.
Okay, so, lastly.
For purposes of the record, are you pleading not guilty to?
Well, it's not a criminal proceeding. I deny the charge at this point until we have a hearing. Hopefully, between now and March 9th, I'll review the record that's going to presented and that way to close my client. He can have a conversation with the Solicitor, he can have a conversation with the chief and who knows, maybe we'll work something out.
And for further clarity of the record, are you agreeable to the few conditions between now and the hearing date?
We will accept those.
Okay, thank you.
Accept those.
Thank you.
Accept everything.
So we'll see you March 9th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Lima, please come on.
Hi, I'm Mr. Jose Lima, Wagon and Chainer, doing business as Lima's Police, requesting an extension of his splash fee with the license.
Good evening, Mr. Lima, how are you?
I'm good. How you doing?
Good. Don't take this around, I was hoping we went to you this evening.
I know.
Again. Okay, so you petitioned to speak to us, so.
Yes.
What would you like to say?
I'm here because of, like I have things on the time that you guys create. And I was two days behind on delay on the stop car. So I went to the 14 month, to get, general question to get the license. They won't give to me until I see you guys today, so.
So, were you aware when we met in December that you had 30 days to pick up your license?
Yeah.
So actually, we met on the 8th?
It was the 8th.
It was the 8th of December, so it was actually January 8th was our 30-day window. Madam Clark, is that correct?
Yes. Yes, correct.
So, so you, I know you had your C.O., because that's what we were.
Yes, the thing was okay, just the stop car, got delayed on the mail. So that was the only thing that was, you know, needed before the date, so I got two days behind it in the mail. And I guess they sent to the Brooklyn address, I wasn't there at home, so I had to call them and then, and then by the time I get here, you know, I was a few days late, so.
Okay, I did have a chance to look at your file before this meeting, and I noticed there were five items that came in after the 8th. Madam Clark, could you, for the purposes of everybody sitting at the table, could you let us know what they are?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the items that were handed in were the permanent health certificate, the Amber's permit, the retail sales permit and corporation certificate and alcohol server training certificate as well as this couple menu.
Thank you. So I'd like to open it up for discussion, any questions? Counselor, anything?
Yes, just for the city clerk, so, what is he lacking at this point?
Nothing.
Nothing, oh, okay.
Nothing, it's, the reason we couldn't give him the license is that the 30 days was January 8th and these documents came after. So we no longer have the authority to grant it unless this council gives him an extension or runs for that date so that he could then do it, or something of the sort that will allow him to do that.
I think a little more, I just want to add to that, if you don't mind. Beyond that, when we rewrote the ordinance, that license actually expired, actually became extinguished. So it's a little more complicated than having the license, it's sort of resurrecting that license. So just so we're aware of what we're being asked to do.
Let me ask this, is that license still available?
Yes.
Technically, it's not. Technically, it's not.
You can file.
Here. You can enter that to a little more clearly.
The relevant section of the code is...
Section 111, that's right.
The relevant section is section 4-41. And it says, "All licenses not claimed within 30 days shall be automatically null and void." And then there's a provision, provided that the licensee petitions the council and shows reasonable cause for failure to claim the license, the board may grant a further extension within which license may be claimed. So this board could extend the January 8th deadline to a further date if you believe that he filed for the extension and has shown reasonable cause.
Just a quick question regarding that. With regards to this license, given the fact that it was a license that the number was going down, does it have any impact on this license in particular? So when we rewrote the ordinance, we had three licenses that would actually go away. So my question is, how does that change that at all?
I believe that if... So currently, because the license was not picked up within 30 days, the license then was rendered automatically null and void, and that's current status. And if it stays in that status, then the 25 B license is are now down to 24, or...
B license.
Right, B license.
Oh, this is B limited, yes, this is B limited.
However, if the council chose to extend his time with which to pick up the license, it would never become null and void, and so it still would be a viable license.
Okay, thank you. Just as to make sure. In process.
Okay, let me ask you this. If we were at 24 at this point, is that 24 licenses that obviously that are currently out?
Right, they're all accounted for. Yes. But there is... There is also the B license. B license, correct?
B limited?
Yeah, B limited. We have a B limited that is also still available.
But he needs a B V because he has a kitchen, correct?
Yes.
Your kitchen's up and ready to roll.
And the lease also was not picked up.
Yes, right. So at your... The December meeting, it was Mr. Lima for his restaurant and the lease, so also did not pick up. They both granted the 30 days. We have not heard from the lease. So that license is also a part of that number. And they both B license.
Right.
And they are full bar and full service.
So now the question becomes...
So long as that extension...
Right, extension.
The word extension, obviously, he applied for extension, correct? And within a timely manner?
Or what would you consider a timely manner?
That's what I mean.
Oh, okay.
I'm probably asking either Sonia or Matt, a timely manner.
The ordinance is not specific.
Specific, same timely manner.
It's not specified. Mr. Lima has been coming to office all along, inquiring about the license.
So it's very bad. Okay, you're ready to roll theoretically? You could open up tomorrow?
Yes, for the, you know, next month, yeah. Right next month, you know, just preparing everything right now. Like, you can give me the lead, that's what's the...
Is everything... You're ready to roll? You have stock and everything?
Yes, yes.
Kitchen can be up and running?
Yeah, that's...
I went to bat for you before, and I would certainly go to bat for you again. Again, I think you're sincere. I know you put time, effort, and money into it. So long as we can legally grant this extension, me personally, I have no problem with that. I think you'll be an asset to the community, particularly, you know, if you're going to have a nice kitchen and...
The only thing I'd like to add that I just want to make sure that Mr. Lima knows that, you know, you're confident that you're going to open, because this has sort of been a pattern for six years.
Of course, I'm really confident. Why I'm not...
Well, I would think that you would pick up your liquor license. So that sort of kind of adds for me the thought that maybe you're not as ready as we think you might be.
I can't pick up a license was at the January 14th or 15th.
Well, you did have 30 days.
Yeah, I know.
You did have 30 days. So you did have 30 days to get your license. So it's not as if the one item, there were several items, so... Sure.
Okay, and Sonia, he can pick up the license as soon as tomorrow?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think if we're going to do that, we should make it quick and an actual final. Yeah, so you say if you don't pick it up tomorrow, are you able to pick it up tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, so if pick it up in 24 hours, then no... I mean, that's fine. I think the gentleman has been given many opportunities to come before us and other previous councils to make this happen. So it's not as if he hasn't been given the opportunities. And I appreciate that you've worked very hard, Mr. Lima, and that we hope that you become a business that is a viable business in the city.
Of course, I will be.
Yeah?
Yeah, because it's gotta be.
Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion to...
I make a motion to grant the extension. I'm sorry.
Okay, so one... Just one point. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. You are aware that you have to pay $1,500 when you pick up your license? Okay, just a... Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, as a point of order. I just want to make sure that, again, did you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I make a motion to grant the extension of said license.
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I had the extension from January 8th.
8th to tomorrow?
I'm going to give it up.
Yeah, we're going to give 20... We're going to give him 24 hours to pick up, right? So the extension goes through tomorrow, which is 24th, correct?
Well, we... I didn't add that to the...
Would you like to?
I don't know. I just want an extension.
Yeah, I didn't think of a timetable. Excuse me. Certainly, tomorrow would be one of...
It's a waiting to wait.
Yeah, I think if he's ready.
Exactly. That's why there's no point putting a time. We granted the extension to pick up his...
I think the extension date is actually important. I'll say why. Because this is something that keeps getting kicked down and kicked down. So I want to give him defined, definite date aligned so that he knows when he has to pick it up. So he doesn't... Something else doesn't come up tomorrow, and possibly 30 days from now, it extinguishes again.
If you want an extension date, grant till Friday. I mean, to say you're going to get it tomorrow.
He's prepared, though. You're prepared to pick it up tomorrow, correct?
I can put whatever I want to pick it up. I can wait for it to pick it up.
Yeah, he's...
Whatever. If something comes up, you can't pick it up tomorrow. I mean, the way the snowstorms are coming, who knows?
Okay, so...
Just hold.
But that's a good...
Okay, so... So let's rescind that motion, and let's start again so that we're clear about what we're voting on.
I'll rescind the motion on the extension. I can amend it to include a pickup date. And whatever your pledge is, I mean, to just hold his feet to the fire and say you've got to get it tomorrow, who knows what tomorrow brings? Certainly, by the end of the week, in my opinion, you should be able to pick it up. Whatever the pledge of...
Yeah, with people... Right, with any...
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow? Okay, so...
There's no reason... He knows he's got to pay $1,500 for it. He's got everything ready. There's no reason not to pick it up.
Okay, so...
At the close of business tomorrow, then?
At the close of business tomorrow. We close at 4:30?
Yes.
Okay, you're aware that there's $1,500, so that needs to be paid. Okay, thank you. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
No.
I'm sorry, second.
Oh, sorry, second.
Motion carries.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So Mr. Lima, tomorrow, don't forget to invite us all for the opening.
Oh, of course.
We've been waiting a long time.
I know. I didn't know about that. It's been a... It's been a while.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you all. Thank you very much for helping. Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We have a draw.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion by Councilor Perry, second by Councilor Gonzalez.
All in favor?
I...
Oh, no.
Second adjournment, 5:35?
Yeah.